I have a really important question though. Where's the restroom?
Through that hall, like, yeah, through that door and then-
There's nobody.
This is our development code. We live by this book, so whenever we, you've come in and asked questions, we look, we go over this book to see what rules and regulations apply to whatever it is you're asking for. So, I don't know, I probably wasn't alive. There, so they started out in the municipal code. And so some, the zoning was created, they land use code was created, they kind of mirrored- they stuffed it. And so with that, then in 2007, they pulled that criteria out of the municipal code, made this book separate. It's still part of the municipal code, but they kind of just, because it grew so much. Well, now, we typically would do regular updates, just based on laws that change. And we've since had a code audit, so somebody, the Department of Land Conservation, had paid for us to have a consultant go through our code, trying to make sure things are good with the law. And then we're enacting some of those, as well as trying to help clarify other things that we've gotten questions about that doesn't make sense to us. Yeah, so, it's an existing document we use every day, and we want to make it simple for others out there that are trying to do things on their property to use, or trying to incorporate the laws that have been put forth, as well as, you know, some of them are advisory, some of them are not. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. And I don't think I did the lighting for the commercial and industrial. So we've, the rest of the commission has seen this once or twice, twice. Once, we did chapters one through three, and then we did chapters four and five. So we've been through it once, so now you guys aren't seeing the full document, you're only seeing the changes that we're adding or deleting.
Is there something you could spray on glasses?
Somebody said recently, the best thing to do is wash them with hand soap.
I heard shaving cream, that's what I heard as well.
And then rinse them and let them dry.
Don't dry and just set them on-
Let them dry.
Look yet well.
I didn't try that.
Rainex? Like a mask where water?
So how many of those is there?
There-
Supposed to be? Seven.
Seven, but... Found out today, late today, that Elena's no longer, she'll be resigning because she moved to Winston. So...
He was in green.
Aren't you living in Winston?
Green.
Oh, okay. That's usually twenty years. Or national payment. One house was twenty years, one was fifteen. You were only eighteen when you moved in there? I was young.
I was eighteen.
I was looking on the info on the DeKalb County tonight. Some lady that lives there, so I'm like, she's like, trying to find-
It's been a long day.
It's been a long cold.
Didn't look it.
It was. That feels like, yeah, I can believe that.
And I'm like, no.
Since I thought the governor changed it into January first, the schools can make their own choices.
I'm sure we'll stay in, so we stayed in.
How many kids getting in?
I'm already back in now, so I just wanted to-
Where do your kids go? Oh, yeah, true. No, it's a blonde.
What age is? Sixteen.
Oh, so you're on the opposite of your kids.
Yeah, because my kids will go tomorrow and like, tomorrow and next Monday, Wednesday.
Yeah, they would stay there tonight, he's like, I want to go and do something, I'm like, it's a school night, it's not a school night.
So do they not have to log in?
No, that's what I said.
No, they're just going to school two days a week.
And see, and that's what, so my kid will be at Fremont, just start sixth grade, but they, their classmate will be teaching the exact same each day, so it'll be a live Zoom. So if you're not in school, you have to be on the Zoom, and you'll be seen. And then if you're opposite, you're in class. So they still have to do their board every week.
They only have to do two days a week.
But we get plenty of homework for it all.
Do they? Because my boys aren't coming home with homework, certainly. I'm like, do we-
Well, when they're in school, so, because my freshman, he, I sit literally in and out of all the schoolwork, so trying to keep up with everything that's assigned, we just don't. And there's a lot of stuff that's in that Google Classroom and on ingenuity that they're assigned. At least my two are.
Mine were junior seniors.
Yeah, I have a freshman and a junior, and they seem to always have enough to keep them busy.
My boys made it enough.
I don't know.
Well, yes, my son, but then I'll log in, like, yeah, you're missing stuff.
Well, and my younger one struggles, so we try to keep him, and being in high school, it's a little bit of a game changer, so.
Class?
Just come to order. The City of Southernland Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven p.m. is now in session. We'll check with the pledge.
The United States of America, and a two-republic, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, justice, and law.
Okay, I'm gonna assume there's no media, but if there is, speak up. Go in here. Uh, it looks like we've got some new commissioners that you'd like to introduce yourself.
Certainly, okay.
Ladies first.
Please.
All right, thank you. Uh, my name is Lisa Woods, and I've been now in Southernland back a fucking year. And just moved back from San Diego.
You done?
Oh, okay. Oh, sure, I- Sure, I was hired to be the director for the SBC, Small Business Development Center in Roseburg. Uh, my business, I have a lot of business experience, own and operate my own businesses in San Diego, also taught business classes in San Diego at the college there. And I just wanted to be a part of the community, coming back, I really wanted, and I figured what better way to be involved in the community is to get involved, so I'm like, I'm not gonna just like, tiptoe around it, let's just dive in first, so that's what I wanted to do, I want to be a part of the community we live in, and I want to be able to help make change where needed, and help, you know, just be different people.
Well, this is a good way to take part in the community, and welcome to the planning division, and welcome to work.
Yes, well, this is my hometown, so, I grew up here, so it's just coming back home.
Well, I'm Gary Daigle. I have a small manufacturing business, I manufacture street rod parts, drumstick boards, chassis components and stuff. And I, I've been, I've done a lot of things around county, I was really help involved with the chamber, which I'm not too much right now, but one of the things I did was the business registration and stuff. And when I did that, I, I talked to a lot of people, and I can't believe the feedback I got, there was, these people were pissed off at the city for something. And a lot of it had nothing to do with them, or it happened like twenty, thirty years ago, and they're still mad. And I started thinking, you know, if they don't get involved and do stuff, maybe we don't have anybody to complain to themselves. So anyhow, I, that's kind of why I'm here, and I like working with these guys, which, that's what-
Don't get that room around.
And then I'm trying to overcome my pride, and that's one of the reasons I came. Oh, and I originally came from Montana, actually. And I was in Orange County in California for about twenty-five years, and I had a business share, and then I moved here.
I'm moving there one day.
To Montana, not California.
Yeah, to Montana.
Because in California, you don't want to tell the government not to.
You don't have a place to just tell me.
Well, welcome, Gary, to the place.
One thing, you might not want me, I'm here to get to know.
We had no choice.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the election of chair and vice chair. Does anybody want to make the nomination?
I nominate, uh, Williams Lee, for chair.
I'll say that.
Do you accept that motion?
Let me say it again.
Oh, Adam.
Take a roll call.
Do we have to roll call me? Oh. Commissioner Daigle.
Yea or nay?
Yea or nay.
Commissioner Woods.
I've been a number of times on that.
Commissioner Sharnowski. Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
And Chair Lee.
I'm not going to oppose. Okay. Nominations for vice chair. Lauren. The nominee, Lauren. I'll say that.
It's quick to get on those, so you don't get nominated for anything.
It's okay.
He has the Parks Committee, too.
Oh, true, you just got that. Commissioner Daigle.
Aye.
Commissioner Woods.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharnowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Davidson.
I better say that.
And Chair Lee.
Aye. I'm barely responsible enough to do just this far.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for October twentieth, twenty twenty, regular meeting.
I make a motion that we accept. Minutes.
So we have a copy of the minutes?
So that's the start of them right there.
I guess I'll second this one, too.
Commissioner Daigle. So, so the week prior to a meeting, myself or Christie, depending on if I'm out office or something, will send out this entire packet. And in the packet are those minutes, the draft minutes. And I know you guys weren't on the commission or here, but if you read them and feel that you're adequate enough to vote on them, then you're able to vote on them. So prior to each meeting, everyone should be reading through their packets, at least looking through it, and coming with either questions, or to be able to talk about everything that's in there.
Interesting, by email.
Yeah, so I sent it by email, so make sure you're checking your email.
And then they're posted on the website as well?
Yes.
If you feel comfortable with what is dated in the minutes, then you can vote. If not, you can abstain.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain because I don't have the information to-
Commissioner Sharnowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Aye.
Okay, next item. The development code update. The second one.
So, starting with the definition section, and some of you will probably have heard some of it already, but since we have new ones, we'll try to go through each one. The first definition for accessory dwelling is pretty much, we're just changing the section, because later on, you're going to see where we switch two sections around to make the flow of the document a little bit better with the zoning codes. So that one's not a big deal. Administrative action, the definition is pretty standard based on what it is. We have ministerial administration, administrative quasi judicial actions. Each one of those, we feel it's important to add a definition for. The ministerial ones are done in-house, typically like our property line adjustments, for example. The administrative is the type two, the type two notices and decisions that Jamie actually processes in-house, but notifications sent out to adjacent landowners, and quasi is the hearings that you guys hear, legislative or council approval. Alteration, there's, we're adding kind of an alteration section, we have a non-conforming use section that we'll learn about later, so adding the alteration to allow some changes, we'll talk about a little bit more, so adding a definition to accommodate. Automotive, the automobile wrecking yard, actually the next three, so the wrecking yard, the brewery, the two breweries, those are uses that we're either adding or are already in our code, and we felt a definition is, we'll help clarify when somebody does ask a question. Change of use, so we get a lot of, just say we have a residential home in a commercial zone, and they want to change it and conform to a commercial use, meeting those standards today, changing from one habitation type to another. Commercial storage, we're going to refer later into the warehouse definition. Um, contiguous lots is just more of a clarifying matter in order to, when you have a lot of property owners that may own two lots side by side, so this just describes when they are actually contiguous, or if somebody wants to annex, they have to be contiguous to one another, this is a kind of a clarification for that. For some of you who don't know, the data center, we have a two, two-hundred acre, hundred-and-fifty acre industrial site that is north of Scarty, and goes to Stern's Lane. That has been considered for a data center, data centers are popping up all over, so we feel it's important to add the definition to for a data center. Um, the Alaska Southern Mills property, so you know, we're Gordon Avery, they're building those homes up there, north of Scarty. So there's a piece that's kind of to the west and north of where those homes are being built.
And it goes to Stern's.
And it goes to Stern's Lane. It's, it was annexed in in two thousand, completed in two thousand and two, and it was brought in for the car manufacturing facility, the electric car. Remember? I remember that.
That was a long time.
It was. So anyway, there's, we have a two-hundred acre industrial site that is out there and available for an industrial use. And we actually have code language that describes the fifty acre minimum to that site, that we incorporated in some previous development stuff that was not actually done what it was supposed to be, so we clarified that in previous code updates. And so the dwelling unit, we are striking what's in the code today, and adding based on the state legislature, so going back to this code audit that we had, this was the recommended definition to meet today's laws. They recommended striking the word family. And then farm, I'm not sure why it looks highlighted, but farm, the farm use, we get a lot of questions because we have agricultural uses that are permitted in the city. And so having a little bit clarification, not having to pull the statute every time, we felt it's easier to clarify in our own code, some people might not necessarily know where to find the state statutes. Lots, or home occupation, we're just changing the section again, because we're going to relocate, change sections six and seven. So we're taking out lot frontage, and then we're clarifying lot front, rear, and side. Again, just a clarification, to make things a little bit more understanding for people, including us. Um, a through lot is also the same, kind of a greater description than what is there, referred to by code audit. Lot of record, just a clarification, we utilize what a lot of record is, some people think that they have two pieces of property because they get two tax statements, not necessarily true. Sometimes, like, I get two tax statements because my house is in the county, my yard's in the city. Brian's the same thing, so we have that city boundary that goes through our property. It's kind of, this helps clarify what one lot of record means when it was created. Multi-family housing, we're updating that based on the code updates to comply with today's laws. And same with the residential facility. Residential home, we're also updating it to meet today's requirements. Senior housing is also the same. Setbacks, we're updating it based on code updates as well, I, we might have had a clarification in those as well. Single-family attached housing is also a clarification from the code audit. And if you guys want to see the code audit, let me know, and I can definitely get that to you. Single-family attached zero lotline house, I believe we actually, we had a lot of questions, and we've done, we were processing the south, the property on South Quamstock that's being developed, was doing some zero lotline, having a little bit additional clarifications to the meanings of it, so we had researched and found this one that seemed to clarify a lot of that from another jurisdiction. Um, taproom, another kind of a hot item that is popping up everywhere, so we felt like we should add. Townhome is already in our code, and we would like to have that definition added. Warehouse, so this definition's using here as well as the previous, kind of just identifying what it is, help clarify what the use is intended for in the industrial zone. Watchman's quarters, so we get this, we get questions, how many can you have, what's, is there a lot size? Different things, they're intended for an industrial zone, one for property. So this is to help guide us to clarify, based on other, what other jurisdictions are also doing. Wrecking yard is also a current use in our code that we would like to add that definition for. So I think I went through that really fast. So if anything jumps out at you, and please, if you have comments or suggestions even after, we'll get it submitted for the thirty-five day notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and then we'll follow it up with our twenty day notice to the agency, so if you have changes, feel free to update me, and then we'll just bring them back up to revisit at the public hearing. It's not set in gold till the council does the second reading, so. So chapter two is one of our big use sections, because it deals with the zoning, so everybody wants to know what their property's zoned, what they can and can't do on the, on their property. For some reason, in our code today, it lists in the table of contents, purpose and applicability twice, so we're just taking one of those off. The section that we, I had mentioned we were reversing, to keep all of our zonings in one section, and then put the special use standards, we're switching this, these two sections around, so putting the one after the other. And so we're gonna, we'll go through and make sure all the sections through here, at the end, are the right sections. So moving into the administration, so the first section is our residential district. So again, we'll just change those code numbers. Manufactured homes and on individual lots is only allowed in a PUD on the residential hillside zone. I'm not sure if that was a, I can't remember if that one was a typo and we were going to just fix it, or if we felt that it was not. Either way, we feel that individual lots should be allowed to have manufactured homes with the same criteria as the residential hillsides are allowed. Based on the code audit, I believe we were changing that the residential home facilities were also supplemental and not conditional, so you guys wouldn't actually hear those, those could be approved administratively. The next two, we're just changing the sections. And accessory uses and structures, we're just adding what section it will be found in to kind of help guide the more description on the there, per the code audit, we never quite understood what minimum zone size meant, but it always said none, so we're just getting rid of it, it's, it doesn't have a purpose to the standards that we have. For the code audit, it was recommended that an R1 zone has a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet, which is more applicable to the zero to six dwellings per acre, and so it's currently at seventy-five, so we would be going from seventy-five hundred down to seven thousand square foot lots. So not significant, but enough to help meet that density requirement of up to six. And the next page, we have a code clarification, I think it just referenced the wrong section. So going back with the breweries, adding the use to accommodate with the the definitions, adding the breweries. And then we put in the downtown commercial zone, macro and micro would be a conditional use, and then in the rest of the commercial areas, it would be permitted, the taproom would be permitted, so just kind of a smaller use versus the processing. And then entertainment, we added a little bit more clarification, such as the bowling alley downtown skating rink. Any questions before I go into the next?
Yes. Question, when it, you're describing in the description, under the definition for the macro, micro breweries and tap houses, and, because on here it says that the minor use permit is required for two of them, but not for the other, is there a reason for- And because on here it says that the minor use permit is required for two of them, but not for the other. Is there a reason for one and not the other?
So the, you're going, the conditional use permit versus first.
Permitted, yes.
So our downtown zone is more for, there's not as much room in theory to accommodate the extra parking for all the extra employees to, and you guys have to help me on the verbiage of what they do for making beer and processing it or whatever. So in the downtown, because the, the use itself, we don't have the availability of land to accommodate. So the parking could be taking up other businesses parking so that it wouldn't be as shared. So that's the conditional uses. It comes with a restaurant or something like that. I don't understand the whole use as much as.
The brewery where you're making it too, plus you have the big trucks coming in and out, you know, where downtown.
And we're open to, you know, other thoughts if that, you disagree with that?
No, I wasn't agreeing or not agreeing. I was just trying to understand why there would be a difference when they're kind of, what would, because a conditional use permit typically requires a sum of money to get that permit permitted. Whereas someone who's claiming that they're doing a tap house, you know, they would call it a tap house where in fact it is something else. So I'm just wondering what would keep someone from doing that very thing.
Well, and the only one that I've been in had the big silos and.
Often though, even with the big silos and stuff, they still have a tasting room and they still have.
Correct.
So that's why I was wondering why.
And with commercial development, I mean, they're required to give us a site plan or, and a floor layout too. I wouldn't say people fib on there, but you never know.
And so keep in mind, this is just for, it's a little bit more than the four block radius. But just to kind of give you, so pretty much the railroad tracks up to the park. It's just for that little strip, everything. Other commercial lands where there's more room for maneuverability and parking and stuff, those are the ones that would have it permitted outright. Was there any other questions on residential or commercial? Public semi-public. So school did, or public semi-districts and accessory uses. They were, for some reason, subject to a public hearing. And so we use the school, for example, they wanted to build an additional building for their ag department. It, the school has obviously an enormous amount of property to construct the structure on or enclose what they were already doing. So in order to put that structure up, they would typically have to come before a public hearing. We're making it, they still have to meet the development standards, do the worksheet, do the land use approval. They just wouldn't have to necessarily go to a public hearing and wait that long of time. Trying to expedite their process. And so then again, we're going back to the breweries. So in the industrial zones, we're also permitting it in the downtown zone, which kind of merges with our commercial zone. I mean, sorry, our light industrial zone, which merges with our community commercial zone. And then in this case, because they're kind of flipped, the taproom would be a conditional use permit versus the more manufacturing use. And then the heavy industrial use are zones that are meant more for your heavy machinery, manufacturing types of jobs. Then we've got them flipped or conditional. Going into the FR zone. So as you guys, some of you might recall, this zone was omitted and now it's back in because we still have the zone. And so we are just relocating it from 2.7 to 2.6. So then all of our zonings are together. And then we move into the special use standards. Which some of this was from the code update. So they recommended going, so accessory dwellings in a residential zone are permitted and can be up to 600 feet currently. It was recommended allowing up to 800. You guys originally concurred with that. So we made that change. So if any of you knew ones wanting to have input on that. We deleted the extra requirement about the architecture per the code update requirements. We were a little bit more restricted on what you can require and can't because it's supposed to make that extra affordable housing. So accessory uses and structure, that's talking about your, the different uses setbacks. And so the first one on to page two dash 12, in no case shall the setback be less than five feet. So we do get those restrictions. So we've got that elsewhere in the code and we're just reiterating it. Just in changing sections on the next couple of pages. Page two dash 16.
I think in the code audit, that they recommended the deletion of that.
For the bed and breakfast, it says there's, it's, yeah, a house has to be at least five years old in order to make a bed and breakfast.
I don't know the reasoning behind it. Bed and breakfasts are limited to a maximum of five bedrooms. Is that a thought that you would like to see changed?
No, it's not, it's not necessarily something I'd like to see changed, but it's, you know, I'm just thinking of, you know, businesses that may look at that and go, I've got a house that's old, I can't build something new to suit a grown need.
Now we could look into see why.
There might be a very good reason for it, but you know.
Did you have another question? Was that you?
Oh, I did. The, are these out of order, the two doc? Two dash 13, should they go above the bed and breakfast? Or before? Does they go with accessory buildings or no? I'm flipping wrong, nevermind.
I'm going to skip over that. I was just confused.
I'm just confusing myself.
Okay, so the garages and carports back on the manufactured homes on individual lots on two 16. So just trying to clarify the 50% of residences nearby wasn't necessarily black and white. So we went with 200 feet of the lot. Just to kind of help depict the requirements. Oh, looky there, lighting.
You did put it in.
I did put it in. So we were, in the event you're in a residential neighborhood and you have a commercial or industrial neighborhood behind you, this section is intended to kind of make sure somebody doesn't shine a big turkey light or building light in your bedroom window kind of thing. I mean, it kind of makes sense to everybody. It's just in black and white. So we have the guidelines to follow. And most developers do ask us for that requirement. So this will just, we'll be able to give them.
I think one of the, one of the things that's kind of, they try to pay on that, where it says the light must be confined to a property.
And I think mainly it's the aiming.
No direction, a little bit illumination. You might have a little bit of a property, as long as the lights not actually shining.
The direct, like the direction.
Yeah. And I haven't noticed it here as much as when we worked at the county. And you would get calls all the time when a commercial place would go in and they just put whatever lights up and they would just radiate the light across everywhere and then you know, those houses that were right next door and they don't get, you know, a decent type of thing. And that couple look like section updates. We had an FR 75, which was way back in the day, which is actually FR 20. And then all of this other, the next section for the FR zone is just being relocated. So it's crossed off here and out of the other. Are you ready to go to section three, chapter three? So access easements, this actually, so some of this updates also might be, like this one is from the transportation that's already been adopted. So we're getting it in there, pretty much changing that you can serve the three dwellings versus the two. So if you do a land petition dividing your property into three, you can actually serve all of them off of a 25 foot easement with a 20 foot pavement. Construction, we were taking off the surface water management. As it would apply more to just the paved streets.
Yeah, for our section R.
Yeah, we need to strike that, right? Because we have it in the road standards.
This also talks about all the driving parking areas turnaround shall be paved to concrete or comparable service. And talks about driveway caprons.
Now for the surface water management.
Oh yeah, we're striking that number two. But you have it elsewhere.
Yeah, but then it goes to section three, two, one.
Because you only have.
Oh, because I only have the edit.
Yeah.
Nevermind.
So we're keeping. We have section R, we're keeping number one and number three, but getting rid of.
So there are two other pieces to that is part I was forgetting. So number one and number three still remain. So we're just taking out the surface water management.
Moving to chapter four.
Right, moving it to the subdivision area.
You have one and one, two and three, and you delete two of the down.
No.
We're going to see if you catch it.
Should we see if council check if a double. They're going to let me, I don't know if they're going to let me do this. You guys are pretty anxious. Changing for consistency, the word chapter to section. On page three dash four, we have a couple typos in those sections. And just so you guys know, we do have it in the code that we can make those changes if necessary. We're just doing it now. So it's all at the same time. Code update stuff had kind of changed the way we worded things for the duplexes and multifamily dwellings. The bed and breakfast, it added. Actually, some of the parking spaces, we were trying to also give clarification to the uses that were permitted that we might not have had already in the zone. Because it does leave an open door for some uses that might not be real similar to what we did have listed. So we added all of these extras. For the code audit on page three dash seven, every residential use of five or more dwellings must have one sheltered bicycle. So that came out of the rules and regulations that we need to comply with. And then going into infrastructure. So a lot of this stuff was already adopted with the transportation system plan. And you can't really change that. I guess you could try. And so these pictures, actually, I should have taken them out because they're already adopted to replace. So just to give you two a little bit more background, we did a transportation system plan. We worked on it for a couple of years. Hopefully I'm wrapping up the final paperwork tomorrow. But it is a ginormous book that is part of our comprehensive plan. And with that, we have updated some of the road standards. And we've adopted them. And so now, just because we haven't reprinted the code because we knew we had these and we're trying to again merge it all into one. So now our code's going to have pretty road pictures. That'll be very helpful for when we're doing subdivisions and different. Me too, me too. Yeah, the chart versus the pictures, I'll take the pictures every time.
So the, the chapels where it says one space per four feet seats in the main chapel or one space per 300 square feet of floor area, is that usable floor area? That, or is that considered also if a chapel has office spaces, is that also considered in that?
It's typically of the gross floor area. And so then we just do whichever.
If a chapel was 3,000 square feet, you essentially have to have thirty, thirty spaces.
So yes, except for going back to your office. So we can break those down. What we try to do is get somebody to give us a detailed plot plan that identifies this much is this, this much is this. So then we break it down. So then they're not having to require a bunch of parking spaces that may only require one for office or something like that. And that's how we do all of the parking. So anytime there's a either or, regardless, even if there's not an either or, we still have them break it down. So we can help break down their parking. Moving on to three dash 17. For some reason, we've always had the system development charge in the code, but it didn't let transportation and we've always had transportation. So that's just fine. What, we didn't have storm, but it was always in there. So we're just kind of making it consistent with what we do have. Did you have a question, Gary? Hey, my phone got bigger. Hey, that's cool.
I may not just know where it's at, but is there, is there a regulation for like the downtown parking for some of the commercial buildings that have just old abandoned cars that are like lying around and stuff that, you know, there's a code for that in this section or is that someplace?
It's in the municipal. It's in the municipal code. So this is a section of the municipal code, but the municipal codes with the city charter and everything, it's, um, a pretty hefty little book, uh, also available online. But that section.
Chapter eight.
Is it chapter eight? Um, and so it has, it lists all of like, kind of the abandoned cars, non-running cars. At one time, we did a staff report and visited.
But a lot of it relates to city parking or city-owned properties, whereas a lot of these parking lots where there's abandoned cars are currently privately owned.
So then. Even though they're in the downtown district?
Um, so the changes in the table of contents on chapter four is, um, we're breaking out subdivision and land partitions. Kind of help clarify sometimes, well, not sometimes, all the time, subdivisions have a lot greater requirements than a land partition. I mean, after all, you're building streets, doing a bunch of lots versus a land partition, you create three or less. Page four dash four, it's just clarifying each use. And we have a community development director, which I'm not sure that everyone met. So this is Brian Elliott, he's our community development director, he tries to keep us. And, and, and on task.
He tries.
So anyway, um, we're just updating our code language to reflect the director that we have. And then the verbiage for the type four proc procedure is just kind of an update. It's actually known as legislative review, because it does go to council for the approval. And it, it amend, it actually amends our comprehensive plan or. Did you have a question about? We have a lot of fun. That's what we do.
If you can't tell.
If you can't. That's right, that's why we do it. Um, so in this little chart, it kind of identifies what each process that we, or application type that we have. Um, it gives what that application type is processed as with further description following. Um, we're adding a non-conforming alteration, which we'll talk a little bit more at the end. Again, just some clarifications on four dash six. The highlights, the yellow highlights that you'll see are just more so, don't forget to double check sections. Just in far, so type two notice, we notice everybody, um, within the hundred feet as well as public agencies. Um, and so the one is just clarifying the public agencies that we are required to notice, kind of give us, or help give us that list. And then adding the applicant and or title holder on there as well. Some of this stuff will just be redundant, um, it just, it's applicable to each section, so we just have it multiple times. I think the code audit had talked about the notice of the planning commission. It had added the not more than forty days, so we are required at minimum to notice a hearing, um, before you guys, at least twenty days prior. And fourteen days in the news, the local newspaper, which for us would be the news review, um, in the legal section. So we do that every time, so we can do it no less than twenty days, but no more than forty days. Some of the hearings you guys will hear, we also noticed the department on conservation and they're the ones that also, um, they get thirty-five days. They get a little longer to look at it. The planning commission review and conduct of a public hearing. So Bill sees this every time, you guys hear this every time. It's more just putting it in the code, so everyone can see what you guys have before you as far as how you're gonna run the meetings. Sometimes it might help them if they, you know, want to help follow the protocol of the meeting. Redundant for additional hearings for type three and four. Um, time computations on page four dash twenty-two. So a lot of that has to do with how the hearings are run. Well, if we have a land use action, we have a hundred and twenty days to do something with it. And if we don't get something done, or say you guys have a real, um, planning permission hearing that needs to be processed. And if everybody comes and testifies and you guys want to continue the hearing for more testimony or whatever. Then we have to possibly get an extension for that hundred and twenty days. It just kind of helps clarify, um, our requirements that we have to help you guys meet in order for something to not be appealed to LUBA, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals. And a lot of times, things that get appealed to LUBA get remanded back, so then we get it all over.
Where do you get the extension from, DLCD?
We have a form or should have a form, um, that we would just have, the property owner has to, um, agree to it. Most of the time they do, um, unless there's people that are, you know, trying to raise concerns and are not applicable, I guess. Um, one of the things that came out of the code audit was fast track permitting process, so it's added in there. It's more for the low, um, income housing. Or assisted living homes. Way, I have not seen anything, um, since I've worked here, not to say we won't, but I don't know that it'll happen too often. We process things pretty quickly anyway. So this next section is breaking out the land partitions into their own, um, section. And I have a, I am not sure on page four dash twenty-six, wanting to highlight it.
Somebody bring that up in the last meeting.
What do you remember about last meeting?
Not much.
That was pre-Christmas trees. That was pre-Christmas.
How far back was it, like in October?
Yeah. I know, I know. Well, every time we got ready to have another one, they canceled.
I don't think it was anything important, I just remember somebody discussing all the landscaping around development.
So are we gonna look into it?
I remember.
I have a note there, but I can't see what the note says.
Oh.
That KG two is.
With the, the green skips, like parks.
Well, in the code audit, it had talked about clarifying, but I'm not sure how to clarify it maybe.
Cause I remember we had talked about the, the, so you get a subdivision, you have the lots that aren't developed, or they set aside parkland, but then they don't maintain it.
And this is like, but this would be land divisions and property, so I wonder if I just needed to delete it, because it's in the subdivision. That would be more for a subdivision versus the. Yes, because in the transportation stuff, we did do away with that requirement. So I'll have to double check it versus what we did in the transportation system plan. And it might be that it's in the subdivision portion and we just were deleting it from the, um, land partition. And then that must be the same with the conditions of approval, because those are just similar. Um, so then plating a land partition similar to part plating a subdivision. We still have the requirements on the, the MIR maps that we have to record. So we just duplicated a lot of those requirements. Planned unit developments on page four dash thirty-three. Um, so originally, the code talked about residential zones and it spelt out all of these uses, but it didn't talk about the others. And since planning unit developments are actually, you could do a commercial planning unit development, um, or industrial. So we are eliminating the actual listed uses and just referring it back to the zoning sections of permitted uses. Kind of a clarification thing, less confusing. And then adding in the industrial zone, the MU, which is our fairly new mixed-use zone. The open space requirement for a PUD, we had discussed in our previous meeting about going from a forty. So planning unit developments allow you to have smaller lot sizes, as long as the density of the overall project remains the same. And so currently, it has a forty percent open space requirement. This allow, reducing it to twenty-five percent for simple math, um, for one, but also to then not require.
Don't tell my secret.
So then to not require, um, we're, we're short, we have a housing shortage. So cities are where the building's supposed to take place, so a limit, reducing the amount of open space helps gain some of the.
Additional lots of land.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and then we still have our city parks that we can continue to be able to support and improve for the recreation that's required for the city. And just clarifications on the rest, um, or grammatical errors. Oh, I didn't do section five. So let me tell you about section five.
So it wasn't.
I guess.
In the bucket?
I don't know what happened. Um, maybe, I don't know. So section five is our non-conforming. So earlier I mentioned, we'll talk about the non-conforming use later. What we were proposing to change was adding an application process. So all these houses right behind here are commercially zoned. Today, they can make zero improvements other than maintenance without, um, well, they just can't, because our code is that restrictive. By giving the, I'll make, creating this alteration of a non-conforming use is allowing that residential use to continue. But yet, if they want to build a garage, they can. If they need to add an extra bedroom, because that's the affordable house that they can buy, they're able to add that extra bedroom. It's kind of just helping utilize the houses that are currently there versus really, if you want to make any alteration, you have to conform to the commercial zone. So that's just one example of probably many that would be utilized. And I think we could put a twenty percent, so an increase up to twenty percent of the dwelling size is what they would be able to do. To try and help accommodate for those significant uses. So that was really the alteration part, that's chapter five. I think that was the only thing that section.
Makes a great new variances.
No, I think we've been deciding not to. Yeah, chapter five is just variances and non-conformities. Oh, the other part was is, um, to rebuild a home, if you have a home in a commercial zone. Um, and if, say it burns down, if it burns less than seventy-five percent, you could rebuild it to the same footprint. If it burns a hundred percent, you have to conform to the, um, commercial zone. So we were changing that to try and help accommodate them, that they could rebuild it to the same footprint, um, in a commercial zone. If it was destroyed by the act of thought. I now think that's it. Storytime's over. I went to my first bed. Do I have any questions?
Okay.
And I guess if you, Gary and me said would like, I could print you the entire, um, development code. Or we could wait until this is complete and have the whole documents up to you, if you want to be able to read it, to nightly reading.
Well, and the whole thing's available online, so whether you want the new printed with the old, or just how you want to do it, it's up to you.
Good, I won't. If you would like one.
I would actually.
It's not that hard, I would.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's nice to compare what you have here to, to what, so you know what it's going from and to.
Thank you, Dan.
I will do that, then I'll give you a call.
I'm done.
Thank you. Does anybody have a chance to read the monthly activity report?
So the activity report is something we do monthly to, we send it also to our city council members. And you guys receive it to kind of keep you in the loop of community developments projects, what we're, our land use applications we receive, our planning cards worksheets we sign off. Right-of-way applications, just to kind of keep you guys in the loop of what's going on in the community.
They will ask questions.
Yep, and sometimes I'll, you know, a city councilor say, what's going on at this address or?
Any questions? So regarding quotes on the LGT, the seven grand. That will be for the restroom sidewalks and two hundred and fifty acres. The other two grants, just so Gary and Lisa know, um, the RTP and the LW, the two hundred and five and two hundred and forty. We're pretty much gonna receive theirs, so we're just gonna prove everything, but with the COVID, it's been delayed.
And these are all surrounding, uh, Fort Horn?
Where's the presentation?
Um, it's actually, it's, um, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. So we'll be giving that from there. Everything because of COVID has just been delayed. So the LGT was pretty much funded through lottery dollars. Shut down lottery dollars, it's non-existent. The RTP and LW were potential million dollars. We're basically gonna, we're anticipating we're gonna receive about two grants. And we're seeing ramp from LG before, they like to see the projects completed. So we're anticipating that since we received the RTP and LW. Hopefully, LG also worked this. Worked the path all the way to one twenty-seven miles down Fort Horn and, um, the rest of these two, so.
Have, have these already been, uh, contractors have already been secured for these, or will those go out for bid?
No, so the, any, any of them asked for twenty twenty, uh, we have not. No, so the, any, any of the grants for twenty twenty, we have not. Right now, currently, we have, if the grants we've seen in previous years, that we're still currently working on, our partnership.
So if there are contractors that are looking for these types of contracts, where can we make that to?
So it'll be advertised through the interview, and then we also advertise through the conference. I wouldn't expect. It'll probably, I don't think that will happen. To be honest, because we have a little bit of wet end that we're trying to work through.
Okay, but.
And the other thing is, it's gone, they identified on there that it's built by a prototype, in best, same thing to live. So I was notified today that they hired a company to come in, called it the G T G. And they died into the rest of work, so they can not. So now we're pending another snow from there. Which is what we suggested months ago, should we go and drain it, dry it, and proxy inside of it. So that's the rant.
What's the stats of the, I don't know if that's the, some sort of park, the little, the little walkaway park?
The plaza park.
I don't know what it's called, but the one next to the, yeah, right down. What is the stats of that? It seems like it's kind of been in its stance, though.
It hasn't been in its stance, so I suppose so. We are currently working on trying to get the plastic trucks. So once we get those, we'll get those installed, and then public works will do the accentifying irrigation. And I think there, we're done.
Will there be outsides down there with sound system, like an outdoor setup?
It's not been discussed. It.
Yeah, the kid, the high school kids will plant the plants soon as we go.
COVID's kind of put a damper on this project as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the kids, this was someone that we had worked with, the high school.
Started a couple of years ago now.
And they're the ones that designed it.
Because that, that could be nice, having a sound system that officially removes the different activities that are going through the, the downtown. When things start to come back and stuff, so it could be, you know, Christmas time, which Christmas music.
We're also looking at adding, out of mom, let's say fifty percent.
Any more questions? Moving on.
Did you have anyone?
Nobody there?
Nobody.
Commission, governor?
I don't have any. I always have something to say. I just, I'm just learning the process and, you know, seeing how I can contribute. So I may have a lot of questions, so pardon me if I have a lot of questions.
Always ask my way.
That'd be great. And anytime, even if you're out and about, and you have a question, don't hesitate to get ahold of us.
Okay, I have a question then. So this is very long-winded, and I don't know if it's appropriate place to ask, but I've noticed that a lot of the downtown, there is a lot of, just for lack of better terms, there are a lot of junk shops that are not necessarily being utilized.
They're not shops.
They're okay, and why are they not shops? Then I don't know if there's a code that enforces that they don't have to be, but if we want Sutherland to be an area designation spot for outside to come in, what can we do?
Well, so we're working on it. So we actually have just created, well, I can't say just, it's been elongated through COVID, of course. Our urban renewal district was adopted, and the downtown is one of the primary projects. So we are working with some of the business owners, property owners, to improve the buildings.
For the ratio of the buildings.
Yeah, as well as some, we have some of them willing to. It's cheap rent, is what a lot of people seem to use it for, which is wrong. And our code does have some language in it that we can utilize. We just have to be careful. So a couple of years ago, we had, everything was poured out onto the sidewalks. So we, that was step one. And the code restricts outdoor sales in the downtown. So we were able to get all the store stuff back into the stores. Now it's just where some of them kind of got a little bit out of shape with us making them pick that up. So they don't open their doors. Others say they're a business, but they're just exciting. So it's a work in progress. We're trying to do things to, through the urban renewal district. There's the domino effect really big here, is once somebody does something, the others do it. And we're starting with that, and we'll just continue.
Is there a timeframe in the urban renewal district grants will be going out for these businesses?
So the agency was adopted, the district was adopted, and so now we're working towards, and it's, it's fairly new, we have a meeting, actually, the twenty-ninth, with the agency in order to kind of help go through some of these guidelines. And then the task force will create some of how those funds can be distributed. We're working with business owners right now, kind of on a case-by-case basis, to see how we can help prior to the funding, how that's going to be dealt with. And so hopefully, we have a little bit more detailed information that we can put in writing to get this moving forward. But we're trying to get it moving forward before the actual funding is here, so.
Is that something you'd like to?
I would love to.
Oh.
Yes, absolutely, I would love to, because it's kind of, I see a. I don't want to come across the wrong way, but the southern one can be great. And I just, with the way it currently sits, it doesn't attract great.
And that's what our goal is. We do have Southern Downtown Development Group that, we haven't had a meeting for a couple of months, but that, I can definitely put you on the invite list for our next meeting and come sit. And it's during the day, usually it's at noon.
Even if there are some of these grants that are available for the, to renewing their faces and stuff like that. If there's something that's written into the grant to receive, maybe it would create a way around some of the.
And some of them, we are, and again, details are very vague, but trying to figure out, so if we were to bring a business and pay for, that, the urban renewal would be able to pay for those improvements to the building that they need, or say, six months of their rent in order to get them into the downtown, let them get themselves on their feet. And so we actually have done surveys and have to recruit the businesses that people have suggested through the surveys and stuff. So yes, definitely, we will get you involved in a lot of that, because we have a lot of moving parts. It's just slow-moving parts because of COVID. So, yeah. Yeah, that'll be exciting.
Businesses in town a lot, especially in Chayton. One of the things that's really obvious, it's really hard, I would be in this town in this town, because it doesn't get taken out very well. Of course, a lot of people don't want to work on Saturday and Sunday, and that's only nine people out of shop. So there's a lot of problems connected with that, and it's not as simple. I, I don't think there's really a big problem in town. Secondhand sports town, but I think that that's a huge problem. I don't, I don't think there's an answer. Where, you know, every, every town, small town in concrete, that's not that problem. Just trying to get businesses to thrive in downtown areas, or even in the cities enough.
But it's amazing how busy, like St. Vinnie's is, which is actually a shop that's open with business. And having business, open business hours.
Yeah, I think that's probably the bigger concern, if you're going to have a presence in the downtown and you want, if you want to bring people to where you're at, you gotta open yours. I mean, there are businesses that just aren't open, and I, I'm not being snobbish about that. I just think that a lot of people, you know, I, I walk a three-mile loop through Sutherland almost daily with my dog, and I, I see these businesses that are never, ever, ever open. And you can't, people don't want to come here if they're not open, but we have something that draws them here. It's kind of like it's trying to replicate what Oakland had. Oakland has a cute little downtown, but their businesses are open. So they're, they're, they're open more so than what we see here.
I've talked to Betty about that. They keep being on, it's also a hobby. So they don't want to be there, so they're not going to be there. And they get people to come and visit open, and they say.
Like, I know if our.
Your fellow shop, and nobody's open.
The businesses that we had in California, when we were in our centers that we were in, there was actually guidelines for the city that we had to have so, we had to have open hours of operation that was built into the city codes.
Yeah, that's a lot to ask.
So currently, though, we, we're looking at that. So we talked to our current management group because of our development, but we're trying to figure out how we can enforce exactly what you're saying. Then they have to be open X amount of hours per day, or so many days per two. And they actually have to have an exchange of funds and receipts, instead of just living in this building with the doors closed. So we understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I just, I just, just, you know, being you.
Yep, no, it's perfect.
Thoughts?
Very good.
And I, I mean, I don't want to, you know, it's not like, I don't want to discriminate people from living their life or whatever, that if you're going to be downtown, and we want to have, not just be, not have Sutherland be a bedroom community. We actually want to live, you know, live, play, and work here. You know, what better way to do that is to have downtown as an actual place to go.
A lot of this stuff is hardly been discussed in.
I'm sure it has. But it doesn't always, it doesn't have a fresh perspective, I think.
It's really, you know, that's really going to be tough for them, because it's just so complicated. There's so many factors, and I mean, if I go over there.
If you're really going to take it in the right direction, if you're going to have those funds to help with the facade or the interior remodel, or, you know, even, we're working on the park, additional parking back to behind the plaza park and backside brewery, the soul side of one. So we're trying to, and I think, I think it's like, I don't know, Chris said, or Jamie said it, but that domino effect is going to start taking place. Especially if those urban dollars are available to help with these individual financial.
Well, and we, you've probably heard it as often as we have, is people don't want to, we've had people that have put a bunch of money into their storefront, and then nobody else followed. So they don't want to be the first one this time, and they own half of the downtown. So by having the money available to help facilitate some of the improvements, I think it will help immensely.
And that has gotten better, that in the town, where they have the hair salon and the Boston Music Club, and it looks way better. So it's kind of working its way that way.
It's trying, yeah, and I think it'll continue to improve. We're not giving up, it's a live thing that we're working towards, so it is. No, there's, there's some empties.
I mean, some of them are, have like the same property owner that doesn't have.
I know, I know that we, we tried to purchase like four different buildings down here, the one that first got here, and it was, it just didn't.
Because they didn't want to sell.
They, well, they didn't want to accept our offer, but, you know, given the condition of the buildings, we probably came in quite a bit lower than what they were willing to accept.
That happens a lot throughout the entire city of Sutherland.
Yeah, well, I know there's some buildings that, you know, like there's one down next to Abby's. The gentleman bought the building just so his competitors couldn't open it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, really?
A lot of that.
Yeah. Which to me, it's like, I would go to either one that's the least busy, just because, well, that's the way I am. Maybe.
So we have to do the thirty-five day notice.
Yeah, we don't have anything, unless you just want to get together for kicks and views. But March, we would be able to meet, so we could get the thirty-five day notice and be, meet in March.